Yes, so Mr Mayor, if I just read some of the protocol for those joining online, because I know that we do have quite a number of people joining online this evening. So can I just remind everybody that you need to remain muted throughout the meeting unless you are asked to speak, and when you are asked to speak, if you can then unmute yourself and say what you have to say, and then put yourself back on mute. If you have a question or want to make a comment, if you can raise the virtual hand so that we can call you, and then, once you have been called, you can unmute yourself and go ahead and speak. If, for any reason, you have to leave the meeting, please try and indicate to us that you're leaving the meeting, but you will be aware that if you don't hear the whole of any debate, you would not be able to vote on that issue. I need also to remind you that you need to have your camera on at all times during the meeting so that we can see you in order for you to be classed as being present. When we come to recommendations, I will call the names of those who are joining online and ask you to vote orally, and then we'll move on for everybody in the chamber to vote by the electronic system. So if I can hand back to you then, Mr Mayor, and you can start the meeting proper.
Pronoun Ar Croyshaw. On Wednesday, the 2nd of April, 2025. Please note that this meeting has been recorded and may be broadcast via the authority's internet site. The images and sound recording may also be used for training purposes within the authority. Okay, so first item, please. Please, please stand if you're able and take this time to reflect and pay your respect to Derek Games, former councillor, mayor, MBE JP, who sadly passed away on Monday, the 7th of March. Thank you, Mr Derek Games. Are there any members who'd like to say a few words of respect, please? Councillor Lisa Mitten?
Just very briefly, I've met with the family and am so proud and honoured to be doing a short eulogy on behalf of the family and on behalf of the council, really, in Derek's funeral next week. A wonderful colleague, such a gentleman, and he will be fondly remembered and missed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
You're councillor Mitten. Leader, please.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr Mayor. It's very much the same as councillor Mitten. I was elected the same time as Lisa, actually, with Derek in 2008, and we shared a term together. Derek is from the village in Abercarnet, where I live as well, same as Gareth. Derek was, as Lisa said, rightly so, a true gentleman, a very good councillor, and gave a lot of service to this local authority. He was well respected by myself and by respected by everyone who was in the chamber at the time with him, and indeed a true ambassador for the community of Abercarnet, Pendlebach and Troydrew, and be sadly missed by us all. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Gareth Lewis, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My first memory of Derek was 37 years ago during his, during my time at Abercarnet Primary School, when he regularly attended during his mayoral year in 1998 and 1989, and kindly provided my first experience of local government when he invited myself and classmates through squash and biscuits at the mayor's parlour in the old town hall. As a longstanding councillor and chair of planning, Derek represented the residents of Abercarnet, Pendlebach and Troydrew with distinction and dedication for a total of 33 years, from 1979 to 2012, during which he was a proud advocate and true champion of the Plymouth Ward. Derek was a family man as well, a dad of three daughters and a loving husband to his late wife Marion. He was also a magistrate, county borough's longest-serving governor, school governor, and a member of the British Empire for his services to the local communities. And perhaps most famously, he's the only mayor ever to ride an elephant through the high street. Derek was indeed the epitome of a perfect gentleman, great fun to be around and will be sorely missed, not just by myself, but many in the villages of Abercarnet, Pendlebach and Troydrew, and indeed across the county borough. Thank you, Derek, for everything you achieved.
Thank you, Councillor Lewis. No further. Okay, we won't write down one of the agenda then, please. Apologies for absence.
She's from Scott Thomas. I think those are the only apologies we've received. Councillor Kevin Gibbs is absent. Has he given apologies? He has, they were, so too.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. Members are reminded of their personal responsibility to declare any personal and prejudicial interest in respect of matters contained in this agenda in accordance with the provisions of the Local Government and Finance Act 1992 relating to council tax, the Local Government Act 2000, council's constitution and the member's code of conduct. Members are reminded that you must identify the item number and subject matter that their interest relates to and signify the nature of the personal interest, and where members withdraw from the meeting as a consequence of the disclosure of a prejudicial interest, they must notify the chair when they leave. Any declarations of interest, please? No, thank you. There's an urgent business item that needs to be dealt with before commencing with reports. The leaders state of the council address. Leader, Councillor Brent Carter, could I invite you to address the council, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and firstly, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address full council this evening. It's greatly appreciated. I want to open this speech with a little reflection. September 2024 will always be marked on my heart where things changed, and what a rollercoaster it has been, ups and downs, issues and challenges, positives and negatives, but I must say I wouldn't change it for the world. Well, sometimes I probably would. As others will testify, leading this authority of ours is a huge honour and privilege, and I can honestly say it's been one of the highlights of my life so far. I was born in Merthyr Tidwell and have lived here all my life. It's my home. I'm passionate about our town and will do everything in my power to make it a better place for everyone. I wanted to stress to the public that as an administration, we will be honest and transparent with everything we do. This commitment I have stated from day one. This is not a nine-to-five role. For those who know me well, know I'm working every day until late at night. This is not because I'm disorganised, but because I really love it and want to make things better, and also because I am extremely busy. For me to make this work support is critical. I've surrounded myself with an excellent cabinet team. They truly are a very talented group, combining experience, outside working knowledge, resilience and commitment. I'm also extremely fortunate to have the backing of the Labour Group, cross-party support and an excellent working relationship with the chief executive, and the most important thing, the never-ending love and support from my family, and without them I couldn't do this role. I remember my mother saying to me, "Ooh, Brent, don't take over as leader", and she wasn't saying that because she thought I couldn't do it. She was saying that as she wanted to protect me from harm, a mother's instinct, and probably because she didn't want to see me slated and abused on social media. I say that because social media is great to get messages out quickly with no cost, but the real cost is the bullying and intimidation we receive from people who think it's acceptable to say what they want because they can. This can't be right under any circumstances. That being said, my door is always open for people to come and speak to me. My phone is on, please reach out. I'm happy to discuss any issues and concerns and we can work together. Last September, the Labour administrator took over the leadership of the council following a by-election in the Bedlin Ogontreliwes Electrical Division. As a result, we were fortunate enough to welcome a new elected member, councillor Jill Preston, who has been an asset to the Labour Group, but more importantly, to those she represents within her community. As the lead administration, our priority will always centre around providing quality services with a focus on value for money. However, we are extremely aware that transformation is crucial for our organisation, not only to ensure sustainability, but to create a culture of aspiration and innovation. With the ongoing financial challenges the local authorities face, we will, on occasions, have to make difficult decisions which will impact different sectors of our community. On the 5th of March 25, the council set a balanced budget, which included a 5.5% increase in council tax. This was one of those difficult decisions, yet with an increased demand across the local authority with certain areas experiencing intense need, such as provisions for additional learning needs, homelessness and social care, we have no alternative. This budget has been carefully structured to prioritise the most essential services, aligning with public consultation feedback. At this stage, I'd like to thank our director of finance, Craig Flynn, who joined our organisation in November, which was a crucial time. He grasped this challenge and has quickly become a valuable asset. Your efforts and work, we're extremely grateful for, and we thank you for this. The local government settlement provided a funding increase of 4.9%, which is, which in the current financial climate was positive and fair. With a continually high cost of living and huge demand across services like social care, all councils in Wales will continue to face difficult financial challenges in the short and medium term. We now need to think differently to be more sustainable as a council. Each year, identifying savings across our services is proving more and more difficult. We have no option but to transform, looking at alternative ways of delivering our services. The appointment of a new director of governance and resources, Sarah King, has meant a renewed focus on transformation to ensure we have a statement of our future aims and ambitions and how we reach them. To achieve this, a cabinet portfolio for transformation, governance and social partnership has been created. I will cover this in more depth when we discuss the agenda item 16. To transform and deliver the most effective services we come for our residents, we have to take everyone with us on this journey. We must deliver widespread change, ensuring a culture where everyone in this organisation understands how they contribute, working with all our key stakeholders, and we will play a key part in helping to shape our services for the future. Plans are already in place to deliver a robust transformation programme. As a leader, I'm extremely motivated to encourage joint working across the floor, and as such, selected Jamie to join our group back in September, and I've developed an excellent working relationship with other independent councillors. Back in September, I offered this olive branch, and I'm delighted to say it has worked, and that's not just benefited the local authority, but residents who wanted it and really deserved it. I must take this opportunity to acknowledge the strong leadership of our chief executive, Ellis Cooper. He is really committed to this organisation and his passion to improve Merthyr Tidwell for our future generations shows his love of his hometown. His support to me since stepping into the role of leader has been first class. One of my key goals as leader is to work with, alongside Ellis, to support him to develop a healthy, robust culture across the organisation and to instill trust and confidence through regular engagement between officers, elected members and our residents. The relationship developed between cabinet and CMT has already provided me with great confidence for the future. I must also remind members that this is our monitoring officer's last council meeting before her impending retirement next month. Thank you, Cares, for your 36 years of service and your invaluable support to me personally. I'll probably comment a little bit more further going forward and maybe tell a few stories, or possibly not. I know as worship the mayor wants to speak more on this later in the meeting where I also comment further as well. I must now take this opportunity to acknowledge the hard work of all our staff. In my first six months as leader, I've seen firsthand how our staff go over and above to respond to not only the day jobs but those unforeseen issues. I'm already in discussion with the relevant officers to host a recognition event to acknowledge exceptional work of our staff. A huge thanks must go to Kerry Dinham and the communications team, who have taken the challenges on board, been supportive and also innovative. A strong leader needs an equally strong communications team, and their resilience and flexibility has been outstanding. I would now like to share some of the achievements this local authority has delivered over the last 12 months. Floodings, Storm Burt and Dara. In November and December 24, Storm Burt and Dara hit our communities causing significant damage. Unfortunately, many areas were affected, and this has had a major impact on council resources. On Sunday, the 24th of November, a major incident occurred where a collapsed culvert resulted in a sinkhole appearing in a residential area and an ant mollus implant. As a result, residents of 29 properties were evacuated and relocated to temporary accommodation. The support given to the community from officers was outstanding throughout, especially those in engineering, highways, emergency planning, communications departments, and not forgetting the excellent support from ward members, councillor Salmon, councillor Leighton and councillor Hughes. Whilst I don't like singling out people with fear of missing out somebody, I think everyone will agree that the resilience and leadership throughout by Carwyn Morris, the council's head of engineering highways, was nothing short of exceptional. We must continue to engage with these communities affected by the flooding and have an open dialogue, keeping them informed and engaged on programmes of work. Neighbourhood services, recycling. We'd like to thank our residents who again have achieved the Welsh Government's worst 64% target for 2024 and 64.3% of our waste either recycled, composted or reused. Waste management are continuing to explore every opportunity to achieve the new Welsh Government target of 70% for reuse and recycling, but we have a lot of work to do to achieve this. EV transition. We're making good progress in transitioning our fleet to electric vehicles. We now have sufficient charging infrastructure in place to charge 74 vehicles at the same time. 20% of our fleet are currently EV, and we are reducing our CO2 emissions year on year. Highways. The highways and street and lighting team have carried out over 1.8 million pounds' worth of routine maintenance and continue to deliver on its scheduled capital works programme of 3.5 million. Engineering. The engineering department completed the Pont San landscape schemes costing 5.5 million, which form part of the Welsh Government-funded Storm Dennis recovery work. We have also utilised 600,000 of Welsh Government funding to carry out cold tip safety work. Playgrounds. The council's initiative to refurbish children's playgrounds is progressing well, with 14 sites completed and another four shortly underway. Planning. During 2024, 91% of all planning applications were approved and 170 dwellings permitted. Fosavon. Merthyr South Wales Limited have submitted a planning application incorporating a revised restoration strategy at the Fosavon land reclamation scheme. The application will be presented to planning committee for determination in due course. Readycar West. On March 12, the planning and regulatory and licensing committee met to discuss the proposed Readycar West development. The recommendation within the report was to refuse the application. At the meeting, members voted against that recommendation and voted in support of the development. The application has now been referred to Welsh Government ministers for further consideration. Regeneration. Halo. Last September saw the official opening of Merthyr Tidwell Leisure Centre pools following the refurbishment, thanks to a £5 million investment by Welsh Government, Salex Finance and the council. Award-winning social enterprise Halo Leisure took over the management of the leisure centre in May 24, bringing with it over 20 years' experience in the leisure industry. Merthyr Tidwell's indoor market is set to relocate to the ground floor of the former Wilco premises in St Tidwell Shopping Centre, following consultation with stall holders and the wider public. An exciting concept has been drawn up for a more modern marketplace with traditional elements. Town centre transformation is crucial to its future. Just to address the current issue, the town centre, we're in changing times, and without doubt we all know that town centres up and down the country will never be the same. We need to try to do different things. Things won't always be positive, but I always believe behind every problem there's a potential solution. It's how we work together and communicate. The introduction of the planters and safety barrier in the town caused a major stir, but let's not forget this was done to ensure our high street was safe for pedestrians. We met with shop owners, market stall holders, and I will mention Steve Williams, Fruit and Veg for everybody who knows him, as he lives in the Plymouth Ward. He had a major issue with access. However, we talked, worked together with the team and arrived at a solution to suit the market and shop owners with access issues. We've also made a point of meeting with them a few times since. They're now extremely happy and have reported an increase in footfall since the pedestrianisation of the high street. Governance and resources, communication, consultation in the cabinet office. The council's communication and consultation team continue to be at the forefront of keeping our residents and businesses informed and engaged. This year, the team has undertaken 19 public consultations, ranging from changes to service delivery to the views of our public on the council's budget. We continue to engage with all our stakeholders to provide them with the opportunity to have their say and form part of a decision-making process on new initiatives, projects, service delivery, and we also try to continue and build our citizens panel membership. This year, the team has produced two editions of the Contact newspaper, which is delivered to every household in the county borough and is available digitally on the council's website. As of March 25, the council's combined social media following across our channels is over 40,000, with our pages reaching 1.1 million users and having over 9.5 million views this past year, which is fantastic. A large contribution to these figures has been the crisis communications that the team did around Storm Burt and Dara, with the former resulting in a collapsed culvert and ant mollus, which attracted huge interest both locally, nationally and internationally. In September, the team started a weekly leaders update, which we share every Friday, and we have received some really positive feedback on these, with views into the thousands. Communication, transparency and honesty is key. We understand the importance of keeping our employees informed and engaged, and in conjunction with our colleagues in human resources, the team has produced six editions of the bi-monthly staff newsletter, The Message, over the past year. Together with our human resources department, they are currently developing a plan to improve the culture and how we get everyone on the journey of our transformation as an organisation. As a team, they will continue to deliver key campaigns in line with the corporate plan and the council's key priorities. The cabinet office continues to support the cabinet and organise key events for the mayor's office. Democratic scrutiny in electrical services. 2024 was a record year for elections around the world, and Merthyr Tidwell played its part. On the back of significant changes to the rules around voter ID, postal voting and eligibility to vote, we successfully held a police and crime and commissioner election in May, a snap UK parliamentary general election across new constituency boundaries in July, and a by-election in September that changed the political balance of this authority. Registars. In the past 12 months, registrars have received a positive inspection report from the general register office in relation to overall performance. The service has yet again faced many challenges during the current financial year, including the introduction of the statutory medical examiner services and the temporary larycation of the Princess of Wales maternity ward at Prigend. Legal. The legal team has continued to provide advice and representation to all departments, dealing with business as usual, as well as specific demands relating to major products, major projects and issues affecting council. The information governance team has continued to deal with enormous volumes of work connected with the security of data within remote access and agile working processes. A key element to the previous recovery, transformation and improvement plan was the redrafting of the consultation, and this has been completed with a new constitution being approved at council in July 24. Policy and performance. The council has made steady progress in further developing its governance arrangements, especially regarding risk and performance management. This has helped us positively address some of our key concerns. We look forward to seeing how these new arrangements will help us in our continuous improvement journey and ultimately delivering better outcomes for our residents. Public protection. This year, trading standards have carried out proactive work protecting our young people from the threat of illegal vaping. A range of test purchase operations, prosecutions and premise closures have resulted in hundreds of illegal products being seized. Environmental health have carried out inspections and food sampling to ensure the residents and visitors to Merthyr Tidwell have confidence in the hospitality offering across the county borough. Our SPF-funded community wardens have been impactful in their presence in the town centre, working with businesses and our partners at South Wales Police. Our CCTV service is a key tool in detecting and preventing incidents in our town centre, and their diligent work has resulted in a number of successful arrests. Clear Build Hold is a South Wales Police joint operation to make our town centre a cleaner, safer, cleaner place, which matches our administration's political priorities. Over the last year, our licences and team have assessed over 600 applications for licences, ensuring businesses such as taxis and hospitality venues meet the standards required. Operations with South Wales Police on licensed businesses have been undertaken to ensure our night-time economy is safe. HR. The council has a wealth of skills and experience across its most valuable resource, the workforce. As the largest employer in Merthyr Tidwell, 68.7% of our workforce are residents. The People's Services and Transformation Team play an integral role in delivering high-quality services by supporting our staff who are motivated, accountable and a committed workforce. The publication of our People Plan, The Healthy Organisation Strategy, in February 24 provided strategic direction for our workforce in six key areas. In the last 12 months since the strategy was published, a key focus has been working collaboratively with our aspire, apprenticeship and shared prosperity teams to continue to provide a robust and well-rounded apprenticeship programme, and apprenticeships have been secured in key areas. We remain committed to providing a curriculum of learning and development opportunities for our existing workforce. The team works collaboratively with our trade unions to promote fair work, social justice and sustainable wellbeing. We hold regular monthly meetings with our trade unions to ensure staff voices are heard in decision-making processes, particularly on issues relating to employment conditions, staffing changes, fair pay, policy development and workforce wellbeing. The publication of the Strategic Equality Plan 24 to 28 in March 24 provides a specific work plan to deliver our inequality objectives. Since its publication, the team have been working towards six key objectives as outlined in in the plan, ensuring that Merthyr Tidbill is a place where diversity is valued. Education, schools across Merthyr Tidbill continue to develop innovative ways of engaging learners. The use of technology is particularly strong in several of our schools, with many developing apps in relation to wellbeing, local history and environmental issues. Our schools are also regularly supported across the region, sharing good practice in relation to the use of systematic phonics and reading, which are covered amongst other areas. The development of the Welsh language continues to be a high priority, and there have been a number of successful events this year, including success, and please forgive me, Vicky, in the Sata Yith Awards, with nearly all schools being engaged in this work. The local authority, together with the college, Merthyr Tidbill, had a stall at the National Estate within Pontybroke in August, and it was a wonderful opportunity to showcase the work being done. There are no primary schools currently requiring intervention from the inspector at Eston. The only school to have an inspection so far under the new framework, which came into effect from September, has had a positive outcome. There are two schools currently requiring special measures, one secondary school and the pupil referral unit. The local authority continues to work with the leadership teams of these schools, together with officers from the regional service, to ensure that the relevant and sustainable improvements are put in place. In March, a very successful community-focused schools conference saw impact of this initiative being shared by schools and partners, and integrating this approach remains an important aspect of the department's work. From May last year, the library service and museum services moved back to the local authority and were placed within the Learning Directorate. areas deliver a wide range of activities for the community. Social Services, budgets within social care can be unpredictable. At present, there's a growing demand for packages of care within adult services, particularly with pressures in health around people being discharged from hospital. Safeguarding adults and children will always be a product. Our Children's Services Strategy continues to be our driver for children's social care and will continue to support our corporate ambitions of healthier lives and help families to remain together. The multi-agency safeguarding team, MASH for short, have continued to manage increasing numbers of referrals from professionals. Positively, the early help hub has also seen a plateauing of referrals from families themselves, which shows our help for the services perceived by those using it. After a challenging year with high numbers of children in care and other child protection registered in twenty four twenty five, I'm pleased to say that there has been a safe drop in numbers. We saw a busy year of recruitment activities, and the fostering service since received a positive inspection from the Care Inspectorate Wales. This evidences the hard work of the team to meet regulations and provide high-quality care to our children. Two children's homes have now been registered with a CI double in the last year, and this will enable the service to work to meet in our placement sufficiency duty under the elimination of profit agenda. As anticipated, we have a greater number of older people who require support. We continue to work with people to enable them to be as independent as possible. However, despite this, we are now supporting people with far more complex care needs. We have developed a supported discharge team, which has demonstrated success in ensuring that people are supported to return home as soon as possible after they have received the medical support they require. Property and Estates, the Energy and Carbon team have been involved in a number of projects and initiatives that have reduced energy and carbon emissions this year. Key projects include completion of Pilot Behaviour Change Programme across seven sites, rollout of energy and carbon awareness training to over four hundred staff, installation of LED lighting in a number of council buildings, solar PV installations at Merthyr Tidbill Leisure Centre, Cawatha High School and at the Unit Twenty depot, and becoming the first public sector organisation in Wales to achieve the ISO five hundred fifty thousand and one Best Practice Energy Management certification. The accumulation of these projects has resulted in a reduction of carbon emissions, the buildings of eleven per cent and a thirty one per cent increase in renewable energy generation compared to the previous year. The team have completed over seventy five projects to date. The project team continue to support departments in the delivery of capital projects and are currently involved in the construction of a new Blessed Carlos Acutis three to sixteen Faith School to a net zero standard, a major refurbishment of Penetra High School to a net zero standard, a construction of a new primary school to replace the existing Goitra Primary School, and also the construction of a new nursery, classroom, mithrin and community room with the creation of a new learning resource space at Escol Riedgrieg. Be pleased to know I'm coming to the end, Mr Mayor. Our immediate priorities for the coming months. As well as the council's key priorities outlined in the corporate wellbeing plan, we have some key other projects that we must focus on. We must listen to what the people of our county borough want and work together to make this happen. This will include reinvigorating our town centre with a new indoor market concept, outdoor seating at various hospitality offerings and key events that will attract new businesses and visitors to our town centre. The Red House, discussions are underway with the council and Merthyr Tidbill Housing Association to reopen the Red House. Part of these plans include a potential exciting new project, which would be great for the town. It is hopeful of further information and this can be communicated in the coming months. As an administration since September, this has been one of our number one priorities, and to say we are all excited by the potential opportunities is an understatement. Cawatha Castle, our jewel in the crown, we are continuing to work closely with the Cawatha Foundation to safeguard and regenerate the castle and the museum so that many can enjoy this visitor attraction for generations to come. Finally, some good news coming to our town centre is a large summer event that will attract many and bring our communities together. More information on this will be communicated in the next two weeks. Let's make Merthyr Tidbill feel good again. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Shall we go on to the next item? Now, items three to twelve minutes of previous meetings. To approve as accurately the minutes of the meetings, we have a mover, please. Leader, councillor Carter.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to approve the minutes of the previous meetings from three to twelve of the report.
Do we have a second there? Councillor David Jones?
Happy to second, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Will we take this to the vote then, please?
So can I ask those members who are not present, councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Only if there are any amendments or suggestions of other regularities in the, in the, okay.
Councillor Andrew Barney?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's all right to make it is. The full council meeting on the fifth of March. On the seventh of March, when the electronic version of this was released, to the tenth of March, twenty six minutes of the, of the recording was edited out. Under the Local Government and Elections Act twenty twenty one, any emissions should have an accompanying emissions report. As there is no, I'm not aware of any emissions report. The, the reason is because, according to the act, that the executive would have approved the emissions. Is that the case?
I'm not sure if anybody who wants to, to deal with that point is, Anna, you were able to just give an answer to that point?
That was democratic services administration error. The full correct minutes are all up on the website now, and they will put back up on the website on, on the Monday, I think, after it was raised with us. So they were up there as soon as it was raised with us, we put it back up. And so the full recording is up there.
So I think on the basis that that seems to have been an administrative error, we need to apologise to, to all councillors and to members of the public if that appeared to have been an omission.
Under the act, there's no editing of those, this record of a public meeting that should never be touched. And we're not happy with that.
Thank you, councillor Barry. Councillor Gary Thomas, please.
Mine's more of a comment than a question, so if anyone wants to ask a question first. No? Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Following on, following Andrew just said, you know, so following the budget setting, full council meeting on Wednesday, the fifth of March twenty twenty five, our recording was broadcast by this authority, supposedly making available to the public the proceedings of that public meeting. However, the broadcast had been edited, removing detail of debate on the contested ability of this administration to include an inflation busting rise to directors' pay with the associated recorded vote. Secondly, the recorded vote on the actual budget paper itself. Although twenty six minutes of the original recording was removed between Friday the seventh of March and Monday the tenth of March, the editing and availability of this representation contravenes the Local Government and Elections Wales Act twenty twenty one and the Local Government Act and Housing Act nineteen eighty nine. And in independent group's opinion, also contravenes section twenty one, paragraph eight of the constitution. Also, Mr Mayor, the planning meeting on Wednesday, the twelfth of March twenty twenty five, it has now been three weeks since what councillor Clive Jones, far of the chamber, referred to as the biggest planning application in over twenty years was determined. We have recently received the written minutes of that meeting, but no broadcast has been published. This contravenes the Local Government and Elections Wales Act twenty twenty one, chapter four, that states, council must make the publish, must make and publish arrangements for the purpose of ensuring that a broadcast of proceedings is available electronically so that members of the public not in attendance at the meeting can see and hear the proceedings. Mr Mayor, I believe either you, as Chair of the council meeting of the fifth of March, I as leader of my, I as leader, or my independent group members, or the council taxpayers of Merthyr Tidbill have formally been notified of these omissions. Following tonight's meeting, we'll be sending a document on these issues to the Ombudsman and the Auditor General for a full independent investigation into the above transgressions I've outlined. These issues are such of serious nature, we will leave the responsibility of legal proceedings with these public bodies. We have little confidence in the administration and leadership of the council with regard to the validity of the broadcast of public meetings as per Local Government and Elections Wales Act twenty twenty one. We will only vote on minutes of meetings our independent members were participating in, and will not accept responsibility for the detail of minutes of meetings we played no part in. For clarity, the independent group does not include councillor Jeremy Davies, councillor Kevin Gibbs, councillor Paula Leighton, councillor Declan Salmon and councillor Jamie Scrivern. Mr Mayor, as the minister currently proposed, the independent group will not, will be voting against all of the minutes in this meeting. The public's confidence can only be restored by an open and transparent investigation into how this authority treats minutes on broadcast of public meetings. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Any further comments? Okay, we take it to the vote then, members, please.
Councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
I'm not sure if councillor Dave Hughes is still online. Is councillor Dave Hughes there? He's left the meeting, has he? Okay. Councillor Michelle Simmons, are you for, against or abstaining?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Gareth Richards, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. Councillor Anna Williams-Price, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. So that's carried, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mona Rossa. We'll do item thirteen of the agenda, Performers' Management Framework, Consider Report, Director of Governance and Resources, Leader, councillor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Councillor Williams-Price would normally be taking the next couple of reports, but she's been unwell, so I shall be taking them. So get well soon, Anna. At the Cabinet earlier, we passed the Performance Management Framework and is now brought forward for council consideration. The primary purpose of this report is to present the updated Performance Management Framework for the council, a significant refocus in following the approval of the council's corporate wellbeing plan, and importantly, addressing recommendations that were set out in the recent Audit Wales report. Good performance management is essential to continually improve the delivery of services, achieve our wellbeing objectives and meet the needs of our residents. This framework is therefore a key component of our overall governance. The council will continue to utilise the Plan, Do, Review, Improve model, which has been previously approved and our research indicates is an approach also taken by other councils. Furthermore, the framework adopts the three-layer approach to performance management, encompassing corporate, service and individual levels. This golden thread ensures that individual objectives align with service delivery and ultimately contribute to our overarching corporate goals. Built on best practices identified bodies such as Audit Wales, the Wellbeing of Future Generations Office, Welsh Government and the Welsh Local Government Association and the Local Government Association, this refocused Performance Management Framework is designed to enhance our ability to deliver for the residents of Merthyr Tidbill. I move the recommendations, Mr Mayor, two point one in the report, the council's Performance Management Framework appendix when be approved.
Thank you, Leader. Do we have a second there, please?
Councillor. The recommendations, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lewis. Any questions for members, please? Any comments? We take it to the vote, members, please.
Councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. Councillor Michelle Simmons, are you for, against or abstaining?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Gareth Richards, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. Councillor Anna Williams-Price, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. And that's carried, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mona Rossa. Item fourteen, Statement of Wellbeing and Corporate Wellbeing Plan, Acting Today for a Better Tomorrow, Consider the Report, Director of Governance and Resources, Leader again, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. The report before us, Statement of Wellbeing and Corporate Wellbeing Plan, Acting Today for a Better Tomorrow, is a crucial milestone in outlining how Merthyr Tidbill County Borough Council is working to realise the wellbeing of the Future Generations Wales Act twenty fifteen and its mandate for public bodies to work towards a shared vision for Wales. This corporate wellbeing plan is now in its third year and is structured around four wellbeing themes and objectives. An aspirational Merthyr Tidbill focused on learning, a healthier Merthyr Tidbill, a safe and prosperous Merthyr Tidbill and a clean and green Merthyr Tidbill. The Statement of Wellbeing reaffirms our four local wellbeing objectives for the community over a five-year period from twenty three to twenty eight and explains why we are undertaking this work. The corporate wellbeing plan then details how and what we will do to achieve these objectives. This iteration builds upon lessons learned from previous years, focusing on efficient and effective delivery. Importantly, there's been no evidence suggesting a need to change the four themes. Ultimately, this report demonstrates how Merthyr Tidbill County Borough Council is fulfilling its statutory duty by publishing and annually reviewing its Statement of Wellbeing and Corporate Wellbeing Plan. If approved, these documents will be published in both Welsh and English and submitted to regulators such as Audit Wales and the Future Generations Commissioners Office. The corporate wellbeing plan will then form the basis for service delivery and prioritisation. then form the basis for service delivery and prioritisation. I'm happy to move the recommendations, Mr Mayor, of the report, 2.1, the Statement of Wellbeing and Corporate Wellbeing Plan, Acting Today for a Better Tomorrow, documents be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Do we have a second there, please? Councillor Minnott, please. Thank you. Any questions from members, please? Any comments? No? We take it to the vote, please, members.
Councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. Councillor Michelle Simmons, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. Councillor Gareth Richards, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Councillor Anna Williams-Price, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. And that's carried, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item 15, Medium Term Financial Plan 2025 to 26, 2027 to 28, to consider the report of Director of Finance, Leader, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Medium Term Financial Plan for 25, 26 to 27, 28 is a crucial document for Merthyr Tydfil County Borough Council, a cornerstone of sound financial governance. It allows the authority to effectively plan the optimal use of our resources over the medium term. As you know, the budget for 25, 26 was approved at a council meeting on the 5th of March 25. This report primarily focuses on the two, remaining two years of this financial plan, specifically 26, 27 and 27, 28. It's important to acknowledge upfront that the council faces significant financial challenges over the course of the medium term. This medium term financial plan projects a budget deficit of nine, just over nine million pounds for 26, 27, and a cumulative budget deficit of just over 20 million pounds over the period it covers. In response to these challenges, an ongoing programme of transformation will be required to achieve the necessary levels of saving. This plan sets out the financial strategy for the period 25, 28, capturing the financial regulatory and policy drivers affecting the council. It provides a framework in which the council develops its financial plans and ensures that our strategic objectives can be achieved within the confines of available financial resources. This report also includes key supporting strategies. Firstly, the capital strategy, which provides a high-level, long-term overview of how capital expenditure, capital financing and treasury management activity contribute to the provision of services whilst considering the risks implications for future financial sustainability. Secondly, the treasury management strategy, which outlines how the council will ensure it has enough funding to meet its revenue and capital requirements and details the borrowing and investment strategy for the financial year 25, 26. Furthermore, the report touches upon the crucial role of the council's reserves in our financial planning, highlighting their importance for financial resilience and as a safeguard against risk and future pressures. This medium term financial plan is a rolling programme, continually evolving as further information and changing circumstances become known. It is a vital tool for informing the budget process, allowing timely recognition of future budget pressures and supporting the integration of council plans and policies. It is essential that we understand and engage with this plan as we navigate the financial landscape ahead. I move the recommendations set out in the report, Mr Mayor, 2.1, the Medium Term Financial Plan 25, 26, 27, 28 included as Appendix 1B recommended to council for approval, the capital strategy shown in Appendix 2 be recommended to council for approval, and 2.3, the treasury management strategy shown in Appendix 3 be recommended to council for approval. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Do we have a second there, please? Councillor David Jones.
Happy to second the recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Do we have any questions, members? Councillor Clive Jones, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is on page 181 of the report, and it's down the bottom of the page where it refers to the council tax correction rate for 23, 24. It says later on that Merthyr Tydfil collected 94.30% against a target of 96%. The highest collection rate in Wales was 97.9% for Neith-Petalbert. Obviously, we'll have the figures because the financial year just ended, the 31st of March 25. Could I ask the Director of Finance whether the 96% collection, well, to try and collect 96% was continued for the last financial year? And will it be, if that's the case, 96% for this current financial year? And is there anything that could be learned from Neith-Petalbert County Borough Council? Because I think a rate of just under 98% is pretty, pretty good.
Just in relation to the 96% target, when the report was brought forward in the council tax base, it was a 96% target for 25, 26 and has been that for a number of years. We will continue to reflect on that going forward in future years and whether or not that is subject to change. But by changing that, it does impact on our council tax chargeable dwelling calculations. And with regards to the performance of Neith-Petalbert, the 97.9%, and we're always open to looking at best practice and to see how we can improve. I have to add, sight of the current data for the financial year, there is a slight improvement on the 94.3% as well, but not significant. But we are open to best practice and seeing how we can improve our collection rates.
Thank you, councillor George.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Andrew Barry, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Page 153, the table there, in section 4. The revenue settlement figures for 20, sorry, for 2024, 25 and 25, 26, from 123,492,000 to 133,144,000 is indeed 9.652 million, but it's only 7.2%, not 7.8%. Yeah.
We'll offline and circulate the correction.
Okay. Further than that, the revenue settlement, 7.8 or 7.2, whichever it is, the revenue settlement was 4.9. I'm sure that the residents of Merthyr would look at that and think, we've got 7.8 or 7.2 as it is. Why isn't it not 4.9? Because if it is 4.9, the difference then drops to 6,510,000, which means that the 26, 27 deficit is not 9,500, it's 12,606 million and 14,634 in 27, 28. So that's quite a misleading figure if you put in 7.8, 7.2 it is. But so why is that? What, where have we got the figures for from the revenue settlement then?
If I read back to the 5th of March report, where we talked about the adjusted base for 24, 25, that was then the 4.9% increase. So the figure of 123.492 is the cash that was received in 24, 25. The cash received for 25, 26 is the 133.144 million.
The cash received?
Yes, the aggregate and external funding received from Welsh Government.
We're back to this question again, are we?
I'm more than happy to take it offline.
I could have to, because that's misleading. That doesn't say 4.9, does it, revenue settlement? Which is what the public have been led to believe. That looks as though we've got more money.
As I said, in the report that was presented to council on the 5th of March, I explained that there was 4.9% on the adjusted base for 24, 25, which reflected transfers in of grant into the settlement for 24, 25. That report is explicit in that. I'm more than happy to take offline as I offered at the last meeting on the 5th of March.
That's we're gonna have to do.
With regards to an explanation.
The point is, if the public look at that, that doesn't relate to the 4.9, does it?
What this report presents is the funding that is available for 25, 26 as in that table on page 153 as we refer to, which is a published funding information coming through for this local authority from Welsh Government.
Again, I just reiterate, it's not clear to the public when we're supposed to have 4.9. It needs to be made clearer. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barry. Councillor Ian Thomas, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got a query on page 153 of the, of the report. There's an item there of 247,000, which appears in each of the three years, and it comes under the heading of Pension Strain. Could you elaborate, please? Explain what, what that means exactly?
Certainly, councillor Thomas. Pension strain. So this is a cost to the local authority for voluntary retirement that was proposed and supported as part of the 24, 25 budget round. As part of that exit cost of that employee, a number of employees, there is early payment of pension costs over the next three years. So as you can see, there's the 247,000 in 25, 26, and it will be in.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Thomas. Leader, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Just very, very quickly, I'll read the recommendations out again because there was a deliberate mistake on my part, well, accidentally deliberate, and nobody's actually picked up on it. 2.1 was the Medium Term Financial Plan 25, 26, 27, 28 included Appendix 1B approved. 2.2, the capital strategy shown in Appendix 2 be approved. Capital 2.3, the treasury management strategy shown in Appendix 3 be approved. Apologies, Mr Mayor, I inadvertently read out the recommendations from the cabinet earlier this afternoon, and I'm glad nobody picked up on it. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Are there any comments? Councillor Clive Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Still on page 181. This is higher up, and I'll read the first part of the paragraph there. Around 35% of Merthyr Tydfil's 27,611 households pay the full amount, that is, council tax, while just over 65% would receive partial or total exemption from payment. This signifies to me that households are applying for a variety of assistance, for example, council tax reduction, et cetera. But it's a very interesting figure.
Thank you, councillor George. Go online, councillor Anna Williams-Price.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I only wanted to take the opportunity to apologise to members that I was not able to be there today and take the reports. But thank you to the leader for stepping in. I appreciate it. It was a last minute emergency and disruptive, but just to give my apologies, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williams-Price. Councillor Geraint Thomas, please.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, if I can, you know, based on my colleague's question, I think for clarity going forward, is it worth putting another column in that revenue, next to the revenue settlement for any extra funding that may come in, which would, you know, enhance it from the 4.9 to the 7.2 or 7.8? And I think it'd be a lot clearer then for us and for the residents of Merthyr Tydfil.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Any further comments? No? Take it to the vote there, please.
Councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. Councillor Michelle Simmons, are you for, against or abstaining?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Gareth Richards, are you for, against or abstaining?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Anna Williams-Price, are you for, against or abstaining?
Or.
Thank you. And that's carried, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We go on to item 16 of the agenda, Rationalisation of Committee Structure and Democracy Support, to consider the report of Director of Governance and Resources, councillor Jamie Scriven, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the Rationalisation of Committee Structure and Democracy Support report will address a significant area for the council and is the rationalisation of our committee structure and the support that we provide for our democratic processes. Now, this report advises on changes to the structure and portfolio appointments of cabinet and outlines the new procedures that we were introducing to ensure compliance with the Welsh Government's statutory and non-statutory guidance on democracy within principal councils. These changes are underpinned by the Local Government Act 2000, as amended by the Local Government Election Wales Act 2021. A key focus of this report is the rationalisation of our scrutiny committees with a proposal to reduce the number from six to five, which members will be aware of as being discussed previously in the last year. This proposal, along with the titles and roles of the new scrutiny committees, is detailed in Appendix 2, and the rationalisation comes after a review exercise that indicated Merthyr Tydfil has a higher percentage of scrutiny committees compared to other Welsh authorities. The report also outlines plans to review and transform the support for committees and member development, building on the consolidated guidance published by the Welsh Government in 2023. This includes improvements already made in areas such as minute taking, member training and the integrated impact assessment process. The appointment of Sarah King has also provided a renewed focus on our transformation agenda, and as a cabinet, we all want to thank Sarah and the team for their efforts that they've made and what they'll continue to do moving forward. Finally, the report also touches upon the financial implications of these changes, specifically regarding senior salaries following the creation of a new cabinet, excuse me, of a new cabinet portfolio, and this would need to be considered in the council's revenue budget for 2026, 27. I'd like to move the recommendations, Mr Mayor, that at 2.1, the change to the structure of cabinet be noted. 2.2, the plans to review and transform support for committees and member development in compliance with Welsh Government's statutory and non-statutory guidance on democracy be noted. At 2.3, the number of scrutiny committees, including joint scrutiny, be reduced from six to five, be approved. 2.4, the titles and roles of the new scrutiny committees as contained in Appendix 2 be approved. And at 2.5, the increased costs at 7.5 be considered in the council's revenue budget for 2026, 27. I saw a move, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Scriven. Do we have a second there, please? Leader?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. At this point, I'd probably speak a little, but I'll leave that to the main part of the comments. I'm happy to second the recommendations set out in 2.1 to 2.5 of the report.
Thank you, Leader. Any questions, please? Councillor Lisa Mitten?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and please bear with me because I have several, if that's okay. Okay, first of all, and Cabinet Member Jamie Scriven, I totally echo what you say about democracy and member development, et cetera. However, can I ask, how many chairs of scrutiny were consulted on this change? And I'm referring purely to the reconfiguration of scrutiny and to the new titles and the portfolio items within those new scrutinies. That's my first question. I'll give you my second question then because it relates to that. Scrutiny is member-led, that's part of our constitution, and that is nationally recognised. How many members and other members of scrutinies were also consulted? I'd like to know that.
Leader?
Sorry, I'm looking at Jamie. I don't know who's answering.
That's why he was looking. Leader?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr Mayor. It'd probably be unfair of councillor Scriven to answer that because he's taking the report tonight in Anna's absence. But just to give a brief answer to both questions, councillor Mitten- But just to give a brief answer to both questions, Councillor Mitten. None, none of the chairs were consulted with. It was discussed in our Labour Group meeting, so obviously Clive and Gareth were there at that particular time. It was a political decision by this administration to look at scrutiny. And let's not forget, it's within each council's discretion to determine how we manage and organize a scrutiny function. A desktop review was undertaken and the evidence from that demonstrated. That we were out of kilter with other councils across Wales in relation to the amount of scrutiny committees we had in operation against how many members we have. The Cabinet collectively came to the view that this was a way of streamlining resources. Reducing the impact on elected members and ensuring that we can ensure adequate representation on all outside bodies. The Democratic Services Team will continue to monitor the changes made and evaluate these as part of our ongoing cycle of continuous improvement. This will help to alleviate the burden on all elected members in terms of servicing not only our formal committees. But also ensuring we have full representation on all our relevant outside bodies. And I also appreciate the value of scrutiny chairs, Councillor Mitten. And you will also have a pivotal role to play in the success going forward. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I continue with my question? Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, Leader, and you're quite right. I'm extremely passionate about my role and take it so seriously that, you know, I do all I can to support officers as well. So we can make sure that, you know, we are seen as a beacon really for scrutiny. So that brings me back to the question, you just mentioned the burden on scrutiny members, yet as I said, no scrutiny members have been consulted on this. I'm a member of the Corporate Resources scrutiny and I asked the question of the chair yesterday, had he been consulted? He said yes. Yet, with the exception of the political chairs in that meeting yesterday. No other chair within Corporate Resources even had been consulted on this. So my other question goes back to five point three of the report. Which talks about both of these documents being the foundation for a departmental review and you mentioned a desktop review as well. Can I ask then if the scrutiny officers themselves within Democratic Services, which falls under Corporate Resources scrutiny, of which I am a member? And also I have a democratic officer reporting to me, working with me and the Cabinet Member and the Educational Lead, were they consulted on this? And then I have one or two other questions, I will keep them short. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Mitten. We, the Democratic Services Team, we were involved in undertaking the desktop review and looking at what evidence and data was out there across Wales. So we brought the team into different aspects of that at an appropriate time.
So the answer is no. Simply.
No, the answer is that the Democratic Services Team were involved in doing the desktop review. So those who were part of that were, were obviously involved.
Yeah, I didn't ask that. I asked if they were consulted on the changes to their areas of responsibility because of the reconfiguration of the scrutinies. I appreciate, I recognize the leader said there was a desktop review, but I didn't ask that.
I think the, the report suggests that actually it talks about streamlining resources. So the role of scrutiny officers will not change. It'll just be the number of committees that they're servicing will be less.
The number of committees they'll be servicing will be less, but the portfolios will be bigger. Just wanted to reiterate that, you don't need to come back, Sarah, thank you. I'll move on to my second, my, sorry, my third, I guess, question, Mr. Mayor. We talk about six point four, we found that Merthyr Tydfil is the highest percentage of scrutiny committees in relation to elected members. Ooh, it's a little bit ambiguous, isn't it, that? So I want to ask, because I did my own research on the other twenty one local authorities and I didn't find that the case. I also found that they had the same number of scrutinies. So can you tell me which local authorities, rather than that percentage, so it's more descriptive? Actually have lesser scrutinies than this? Thank you. And then I have a question for the Montreux Officer, thank you.
So can you, give you, oh, yeah, one, one example, Councillor Mitten, and maybe Anne can give some other, further examples. But for example, Cardiff Council, who has seventy nine members, have the same amount of scrutiny committees as what we do with thirty members.
Okay, thank you for that. I think I'll keep my comments to observations in relation to that. Okay, Montreux Officer, can I double check? It's your last one tonight, so you can help me with this one, because forgive me, I have forgotten. Do I ask for a deferment of this report now or during observations? I can't remember.
You, you have various options with that. You can ask for it to, to be deferred, which will effectively be an amendment unless the, the member putting it forward agrees to defer it.
Yeah.
You would need to put that forward as an amendment and you can do that now or you can do it as part of comments and observations.
Okay. I, I think rather than waste people's time then, if I can, Mr. Mayor, put forward that I recommend this report is deferred. Purely on the basis, and I'll give my rationale around that, purely on the basis of the cart before the horse, I'll call it. There are a number of references in here. One at the beginning, which refers to six point six, the demand on officers, as well as growing demands on councillors, outside representation, et cetera. Yet that body of work hasn't actually been done. At least I can't see it within there. Within the structure of the committees themselves, there is some. Well, the names of the, the committees themselves are misnomers, I have to say. But within the structure of the committees, two committees are looking after climate change and decarbonization. And the, bear with me a second as I scroll down, the thriving committee, love that. The thriving committee is going to be looking after bereavement services as well. So I just wonder whether enough thought has been given to these scrutiny committees. I haven't necessarily got issue with the Cabinet roles and, and the changes to that. But certainly with the scrutiny committees. And let me just explain my rationale, as I said. Thriving Committee, Chair of Education at the moment says what it says on the tin, okay? And as do other committees and as do other twenty one local authorities. The new cabinet posts also do that, their titles say what they are on the tin. These wellbeing objectives, which is what they are, do not say what we will be scrutinizing, as I said, on the tin. They are at the very least dubious, they are nondescriptive, they are misknown as, misnomers and they give a false impression of what this council should be scrutinizing. Now, whether we come back and we still need to reduce the number of scrutinies, I haven't got a problem with that. But I have got a problem with the content, the portfolios and the names. As I said, I am sat down and interviewed by Aston inspectors, as are other colleagues within social services, Care Inspector at Wales, et cetera. Statutory obligations that we have as a local authority. I cannot foresee myself sat there with, as I said, and the leader agreed as well, you know, with the passion that we have for this authority, make sure we scrutinize properly. Member led scrutiny, sit there and say, I am the Chair of the aspirational committee. Oh, and by the way, I also sit on the Sustainable Committee. The Sustainable Committee says nothing about what Corporate Resources actually does and neither does the aspirational committee. And it certainly will not help Joe Public understand what our scrutiny does. And we already have issues with that when we're asking the public to get engaged. And last but not least, our co-opted members have not been consulted either. Therefore, that is my recommendation that we defer it until proper consultation is done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Mitten. Can we have a second there for that, please? Councillor Gary Thomas?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions on the amendment then, please? Any comments on the amendment? Councillor, Leader?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Some interesting comments, Councillor Mitten. I totally agree with you, with your comments and we echo the same sentiments on scrutiny. We probably disagree completely on the names and the way you describe them. I think they've got far more meaning than what they've got at the moment. You talk about yours at the moment, you're currently Chair of Learning in Laiskip. What does Laiskip mean to the people out there? What does neighborhood services mean to people out there? It doesn't mean anything. It's the name which is there, it's what everything sits underneath. So I'll probably answer for Jamie and say, I won't be accepting your recommendation for defer of tonight. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Any further comments?
As long as nobody else wants to speak on the amendment then, yeah.
Can we all, no.
Councillor Gary Thomas, I think we'd need to speak before.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the meeting started today with the leader saying how open and transparent and honest this new administration is that came in post in September, halfway through the year. Now, we've got this report in front of us today, as my colleague, Councillor Lisa Mitten, has just mentioned. We've had no discussion on this, there's been no scrutiny on this whatsoever. It's been put on us tonight to make a decision after being published, you know, last Thursday. Surely, we have to have more time to discuss this because it's a major change in how this local authority works. So I'm totally supportive of my colleague and I just wish that, you know, for the, just for transparency reasons, the Labour Group would support this as well and other independent members.
Thank you, Councillor Thomas. Councillor Mitten?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues and Leader, just to clarify, I'm not saying I'm against the changes. I'm saying we need to consult on the names of the scrutinies and the portfolio items within them. I, I'm quite amused that you think thriving Merthyr is okay to have bereavement services in there, but I'll leave that at that. This is democracy at its worst, Mr. Mayor. You know, we are supposed to be a democratically elected council, member led scrutiny, and yet there has been no consultation. Apart from what the leader said, political, this is purely political. And we're talking about a financial increase as well, so I think he should reconsider his comments. However, I echo what I said, I would be the first to, to support and reconsult on this, but that's what my deferment is. Democracy at its worst. Let's just defer it, bring it back with some really good descriptive titles, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mitten.
Yes, so we're going to take that to the vote then, and that is the vote on the amendment put forward by Councillor Mitten, that this item be deferred. So if you vote in favor, you are voting in favor of deferring this item. So I will take the votes from those online and if those in the chamber want to vote as well. So Councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against or abstaining in respect of the deferment?
Against.
Councillor Michelle Simmons, are you for, against or abstaining?
For.
Councillor Gareth Richards, are you for, against or abstaining?
Against.
Councillor Anna Williams Price, are you for, against or abstaining?
Against.
Thank you. So the amendment falls and we then need to go back and deal with the substantive recommendations. And you had got to questions, I don't think you had got either, we hadn't confirmed that we had got to the end of questions. So we need to finish questions in case there are any more and then move on to see if there are any comments, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions on the recommendations then, please? Councillor Clive Tavi?
Yes, what I find a bit bizarre, of course, there's an additional cost to this. But the intention is to nominate a person to the post of Deputy Mayor who's already in receipt of a senior salary. So is the constitution going to be altered that you can only become mayor or deputy mayor then mayor if you're in receipt of a senior salary? You know, it seems a bizarre thing to say really, because when we go to the, the annual general meeting. If you, if you're not got a senior salary, you won't become deputy mayor. Seems a strange thing. Am I reading it right?
Let me just say first of all, no, we're not changing the constitution. Worked hard enough to get the constitution in as it is. And I'll, I'll leave it to, I think the leader wants to respond on the, on the main question that you asked.
Okay, Leader?
Yeah, thanks, Gareth. Thanks for the question, Councillor Tavi, but no, in a nutshell, no. What we are proposing for, for this year is, come the AGM, we will be moving that the Deputy Mayor will be someone who has a senior salary. Therefore, won't be able to claim one, another one for this year. But that doesn't say next year that will happen. We're keeping the Deputy Mayor's role, salary cost still in the budget line, we're not removing that.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Gary Thomas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's, it's all, it's all matters on the cost really and when, when is this going to be implemented? Because I believe the leader and his recommendations and his spiel at the start. Mentioned that the budget would have to be changed, altered for twenty six, twenty seven. So is this going to come in, in twenty five, twenty six? Because obviously the budget line will have to change for twenty five, twenty six. Am I correct?
The budget would be adjusted in twenty six, twenty seven. There is no budget change for twenty five, twenty six, there will be an overspend against the approved budget.
I wish we voted about this, sorry, but I'll make that a comment, I'll come back with that as a comment. But again, Mr. Mayor, I think it was the leader mentioned about the, the budget line for the Deputy Mayor is going to stay in there. Now, I understood that that was being removed, so and that the additional cost would only be seven thousand pounds. So if that additional line remains in there, the Deputy Mayor could be someone outside of a senior salaried position. What would the cost then be for that extra Cabinet Member?
So the difference in the salary between a Cabinet Member and a regular payment is nineteen, nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy one for a councillor, standard salary. And thirty seven thousand eight hundred and twelve for a Cabinet Member. But then there are different levels then, so a Chair is twenty nine thousand six hundred and fifty seven. So it depends what the changes are, but there are different levels for different tiers of senior salary.
Mr. Mayor, I can come in with a supplement, you know, yeah, I totally understand that, but, but every year the budget's going to jump around, isn't it? And the, the costs will change after we've set the budget, when we come to AGM. Because we're not going to know who that Deputy Mayor is going to be. So for us to be clear, I think as elected members, we voted for this tonight. Now, the difference in cost could be anything between seven and a half thousand and that nineteen thousand pounds, I suppose. And we've got to keep that in mind.
I, I think the difference is, and the issue that we are, you saying that the Deputy Mayor won't be in receipt of a senior salary. Is because we're at our maximum for senior salaries. And that's why we were saying about that, you know, that, that's the reason for it being a person without a senior salary. So we couldn't add a senior salary to it anyway. So the, the only difference is ever going to be between whether somebody's coming from a Chair position. Or they're coming from a standard salary position, that's, that's the difference.
Thank you, Councillor Thomas. Councillor Andrew Barry, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Scrutiny clearly is pillar of governance. Has this report been through audit, governance and audit?
No, Councillor Barry, it hasn't been through there, but as, as you will know, that, that there should be a clear division between scrutiny and an audit function within a council. This is, the report is coming here for the first time tonight.
Okay. Concerning, because the medium term financial plan, I don't think has been through governance and audit, has it?
That will go to the next, the next governance audit committee.
So in terms of scrutiny. Medium term financial plan has gone through, hasn't been to governance and audit. And the pillar of governance, which is scrutiny, hasn't been to governance and audit. Questions the role of governance and audit, really, I was meant.
Councillor Barry? Any further questions? Councillor Clive? Councillor Clive George?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might sound a bit mundane compared to the other questions. It's on page 224, under 610. So if this report is approved, it says there, this change would also require a review of the scrutiny co-optees. It's a plea, really, that co-optees are an important part of all the scrutiny committees. But what I've noticed is that some of the co-optees are very good attenders and take their full part, but there are some co-optees who are not attending perhaps meetings as they should. So if this report goes through tonight, it's a plea for me that we need to advertise, or review, the current co-optees, and determine from there whether all the co-optees are going to remain, and obviously, it may require advertising these positions. So what we really need, Mr. Mayor, is a full quarter of active co-optees on every scrutiny committee. So I hope that's going to be looked at.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Any further comments? Sorry, councillor Lee Smith?
Mr. Mayor, we're on comments now, yeah? Right. Yeah? Is that okay? Yeah, okay, okay. Oh, Clive, I couldn't put it better myself. Co-opted members are so important, aren't they? Yet they haven't been asked any of this. And I look forward to the day when we advertise for new co-opted members onto the thriving committee. They're going to know exactly what they're signing up for. And I look forward to me being, well, for the short term, certainly until the AGM, the chair of the aspirational committee. What did tickle me was when I reminded myself of the links to Cabinet and the links to wellbeing objectives, it says, "An aspirational Merthyr Tydfil focused on learning, linked to Cabinet, lead on learning", yet the leader doesn't like the word "learning". Okay, so no chairs consulted, apart from the political ones, apologies. No scrutiny members consulted, no co-opted members consulted, no members of public consulted, but then I feel like I'm in Family Fortunes, and if Fern and Kay were here, he'd say we serve eight hundred people instead of 60,000, but uh-uh. Okay, and as I said, the scrutiny names are misnomers at the very best. They are misleading and dubious. The leader has said this is political, so it's not what the people of Merthyr Tydfil want, then. It's political. Okey-dokey, I'll remind myself of that. It doesn't say what it is on the tin, as I said. And yes, I agree that the number of scrutinies perhaps need to be reduced, or are now going to be reduced, but the difference between us and the 21 other local authorities is that their scrutinies are descriptive. You know what you're signing up for, you know what you're scrutinising, and when you ask for referrals, they'll know what they'll be referring into. Ours will not. As I said earlier, and I'll say it again, democracy at its worst, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councillor Mitten, councillor Jamie Scriven, please. Do you need to confirm, Mr. Mayor, if we must have taken them first? Leader, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Where do I start? Tonight has probably been quite, quite interesting in lots, in lots of different things, and I've got some things to read out. But first, before I actually do that, it's interesting that councillor Barry mentioned the medium-term financial plan going to governance and audit before we agreed it here tonight. I wondered if he could remind me if it did that over the last seven years while he was a cabinet member. I don't think it did. So let's not play politics here tonight. And also councillor Mitten, I never said I didn't like the turn, the term "learning" one little bit, so please don't put words into my mouth. And when we're talking about tonight, we're talking about this dramatics and histrionics, and we're talking about the people, what the people wanted out there. Just a reminder to everybody here, back in 2022, there was a 1515 split vote. The people wanted a shared ruling body. Did that happen? No, it didn't. And it could happen for lots of different reasons. So please don't play politics tonight and play on words. It doesn't work and it doesn't suit. Mr. Mayor, firstly, Mr. Mayor, may I extend my thanks to Anne Taylor for this excellent report, as well as Sarah King and councillor Anna Williams-Price for their passion and determination in bringing these changes to fruition. For me, the choice is simple. As an organisation, we must change, adapt, and grow to ensure we are fit for purpose and remain sustainable in the future. We are acutely aware of the challenges that scrutiny presents, not only in terms of member involvement, but also regarding staffing resources. Adjusting the numbers will make scrutiny a more efficient and effective process, allowing for true challenge in a way that aligns more closely with a critical friend approach. We consider the new committee titles carefully, and aim to create a cohesive theme across them all, hence the inclusion of Merthyr Tydfil. And just to remind members, pages 82 and 83 of tonight's meeting pack outline the authority's wellbeing objectives. These new names now have real meaning and align seamlessly with our corporate plan and wellbeing objectives. As we all recognise, real transformation must take place. I fully appreciate the challenges this will bring, and I quickly concluded that to drive this challenge effectively, an additional cabinet member was needed. The public has been calling for a more unified council, and I repeat this since 2022. And since my appointment as leader, I have championed this cause. We must work together in relative harmony for the betterment of Merthyr Tydfil. Our constituents deserve the best outcomes and the highest quality service. Cross-party collaboration will be key to achieving this, and so I'm delighted to announce that councillor Declan Salmon has agreed to join the Cabinet as the new cabinet member for transformation, governance, and social partnerships. Councillor Salmon is fully aware of the scale of the challenge ahead, but I have no doubt that he will embrace it wholeheartedly. Dowler and Punt are extremely fortunate to have such a hard-working, honest, and reliable councillor. His values and integrity are the highest standard, and I know he's truly committed to helping us build and develop Merthyr Tydfil. Community engagement, passion, and determination define Declan, and his contribution will add real value to the Cabinet. Mr. Mayor, if you'd indulge me further, I'd like to invite councillor Salmon to speak next before bringing in councillor Scriven. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Salmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lots has been said tonight, and everyone's got their own point of view, but I'm going to try to bring a little bit of positivity, positivity tonight. The leader of the council has said it's the right change at the right time. Now, every lead administration must be given the chance to do things their way, to make the changes they believe need to be made, and to steer the local authority in the direction they believe will have the most benefit for residents. I've been asked by councillor Brian Carter that if this item goes through tonight, to join the Cabinet, to work with the Labour Group, independent councillors, directors, and staff for the good of Merthyr Tydfil and its residents. I've been briefed on some of the administration's vision for Merthyr Tydfil, and because I liked what I saw, I have accepted the role as cabinet member, again, subject to a passing tonight, and I will do my very best in that role, and do what residents want, which is for councillors to work together to help improve the lives of everyone living in Merthyr Tydfil. Everything I've done over the last eight years has been for residents, and that will never change. We now have two years to work together as elected members to continue making positive changes for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Salmon. Any other comments before I bring Jamie, councillor Jamie Scriven's in?
Councillor Mitten?
Councillor Jamie Scriven, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to wrap up the report, raise, you know, these proposals are part of a holistic review of how the administration performs, the arrangements of cabinet members, how that filters into our core processes such as scrutiny, and ensuring effective scrutiny is brought forwards part of this as well. Now, I will echo what councillor Barry's comments, that transformation needs to happen now, a bit like you said at one of our last four councils. So that's what we're doing. We're not waiting to keep notifying and looking at different options in terms of discussed the similarities of names, but we've got to do transformation now, as you said. Councillor Mitten, I understand what you were trying to present in your argument as well. You know, as a participation officer for many years now, it's always great to be democratic and have people involved, but just to clarify, now, as the deputy leader of your group said again, we're put in place to represent the public, and you wanted to hammer on the point that actually, we've got access to information above what the public need, and on that note, sometimes we've got to use that expertise to provide what they need, not always what they want. And we've got, this transformation has got to be put in place, and it's got to be put in place now. We can't just keep pushing it back because we don't feel things as names are not correct. And that is a key part of what we're going to do going forward, and we need to ensure a robust and strengthened approach to the golden thread that runs our organisation. That's what we're trying to do. You know, and that requires an alternative operating model when it comes to scrutiny, and in terms of what we do as Cabinet. And this is what members will be aware of. We previously discussed issues around scrutiny reform in different workshops. It's been brought up over the last year in terms of the scrutiny committees, and even issues in terms of getting people on scrutiny, there's been vacancies. So we will rearrange committees if the vote goes through tonight to ensure that we're effective and efficient with scrutiny, but now also to align with the new cabinet structure and tighten our approach to scrutiny as an administration as well. And like I said, Anne has historically made us aware of issues with committees. We actually recently had conversations around scrutiny in terms of vacant positions, and this includes outside bodies, you know, and that representation, it becomes more difficult when we've got members spread, taking several posts up across the organisation, and we just can't fill things. So this, this is an holistic approach in terms of what we need to do, and it's something that staff have echoed as well. So as much as there's not been a formal consultation, these conversations have happened, and members have been aware of them, they have taken place over the last year. And like I said, I understand issues with names, but I don't think there's ever a perfect name for committees with these large remits either. So one thing that we will do, and we have discussed, there will be promotional pieces around the new structure, making sure that's reflected on the website and with our social media as well. And that, from that perspective, we want to ensure it's easy and accessible for residents to access the committee names and information, and they can clearly see what each committee will deal with. So as much as we could go back and forth and disagree on things in terms of names, how we move forward now, and we take the approach in terms of promoting to residents what these new committees mean and what they deal with, that's something we can handle. And I think that would be the case for whatever the name of a committee would be named. So I just think on that note, I've got nothing more really to say, other than if the report goes through, I'm really proud actually to be part of this administration, and echo what the leaders previously said, that we are an administration working together, doing what the public wanted with councillors across the room, and that will be represented in our cabinet as well, in the fact that I won't just be the only independent member now, but should it go through, I'd welcome councillor Salmon on board as well, and would be very much looking forward to working with him around the transformation agenda, which we're going to put in place now. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Scriven. So we'll take it to the vote then, members, please.
Councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against, or abstaining?
All.
Thank you. Councillor Michelle Simmons, are you for, against, or abstaining?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Gareth Richards, are you for, against, or abstaining?
All.
Thank you. Councillor Anna Williams-Price, are you for, against, or abstaining?
All.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Monroffe Sir. So you want to item 17, school admission policy, 20262027. To consider report, the director of education, councillor Gareth Lewis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully this report will be less controversial. The local authorities are required to determine its admission arrangements by the 15th of April each year, and this report sets out the school admissions policy for the 2627 academic year. The policy was developed in consultation and discussion with the statutory consultees, detailed in 3.4 of the report, as well as a number of relevant local authority departments. There have been no substantive changes to the existing policy, and I'd like to move the recommendations in 2.1 through to 2.2 of the report. They read, "The determination of admission arrangements for academic year 2627, as set out in the school admission policy 2627, be approved", and 2.2, "The delegation of authority for the annual determination of these arrangements to the director of education, unless there are substantive changes to arrangements, be approved." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Lewis, we have a second, please. Councillor David George?
Happy to second the recommendations.
Thank you, councillor George. Any questions for members, please? Councillor Geraint Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as the cabinet member said, there's no real change to this report. My only ask, really, and question to the cabinet member, and this was Anthony Judd today representing the director, is when a child, or the parents of a child, guardians of a child, approaches a school, approaches the admissions, asking for a place in a particular school, can we just remind them about our net zero targets, et cetera? Because of the amount of children that's moving from one side of the borough to the other side to attend a school is just causing traffic chaos around the town and the carbon emissions. And I think it may be an ask, you know, that we could put forward to parents and guardians and say, "Look, please consider using, you know, the school in your area first." That's my plea.
Something to take into consideration, thanks.
Councillor Thomas, any further questions? No comments? We take it to the vote then, please.
Councillor Darren Roberts, are you for, against, or abstaining?
All.
Thank you. Councillor Michelle Simmons, are you for, against, or abstaining?
All.
Thank you. Councillor Gareth Richards, are you for, against, or abstaining?
All.
Thank you. And councillor Anna Williams-Price, are you for, against, or abstaining?
All.
Thank you. And that's carried, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Monroffe Sir. Items 18, 19, and 20 are information reports only. Item 21, did you have any other urgent business or correspondence? We have two.
A pretty sort of standard of our interview, you know, obviously your name, membership number.
Following a complaint that has been made against me by councillor Andrew Barry, I would like to take this opportunity to apologise to councillor Andrew Barry for calling him a joke. I let my emotions get the better of me, and I should not have used that term in the setting of a full council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Salmon. The second one on the agenda, as the leader has alluded to earlier, or as you're already aware, that this will be Caddis's last full council meeting, as she will soon be retiring after an impressive 36 years of dedicated service to the Merthyr Tydfil County Borough Council. Caddis joined us in May 1989. Since then, she has been a constant, unwavering presence in the council, contributing not only her expertise and skills, but also her passion and commitment to local government. Over the years, she has made an indelible mark, and her hard work has positively impacted countless individuals. A career spanning three and a half decades is no small feat. In those 36 years, Caddis has seen an experienced, immense changes with local government, navigating through evolving systems, technologies, and processes. But through it all, her dedication to public service has remained constant, whether tackling complex challenges, offering guidance to colleagues, or working tirelessly behind the scenes. Caddis has shown what it means to be a true professional, and has built lasting relationships that will be cherished by all who have had the privilege of working alongside her. As you prepare for this well-earned chapter of your life, I know I speak for everyone here when I say that your presence will be deeply missed. I know I speak for everyone here when I say that your presence will be deeply missed. You've set a high standard for all who follow, and your legacy will continue in the work that we do every day. On behalf of everyone here at Merthyr Tidbill County Borough Council, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for the thirty six outstanding years of service. Thank you. Caris, on behalf of myself and all elected members and officers, I would like to present to you that.
Thank you.
Leader, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, a true fitting tribute to Caris Kennedy. Caris, I'm quite surprised. I've never had a kiss on the cheek in the years I've been here. I think there's a reason probably why. Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Caris has been here since I was elected in two thousand and eight. So I've known Caris for quite a long period of time. And I'm happy to say that I've never caused a moment's trouble. Well, maybe one or two along the way, but not for a while. I said a few words in Cabinet earlier, so I'll keep this short tonight. Caris has left a definite mark on this authority. You will be greatly missed. I will miss you greatly because your advice and support over my terms since I've been in office has been invaluable, and I'll always respect you for that. Moving forward, somebody else will fill you with shoes, and there are big shoes to fill. So I will leave it at that, Mr Mayor. But sadly, you'll be leaving the authority and you'll be greatly missed by myself. And as John said, everyone in this chamber here tonight. So thank you very much for your years of service. Like a military possessed, you know, years of service. John will come up with a medal now. But thank you very, very much for everything you've done for this authority. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, leader. Councillor Gary Thomas, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. When the mayor told me earlier this evening that it was going to be our last council, I was a little bit shocked because none of us knew. None of us knew. So we were all very, very shocked. And then when he told me then about, you know, the amount of time that you've given this authority, you know, over thirty years, and thinking back, you worked with my parents. My parents were councillors here, and my father's been dead twenty seven years. So that says a lot. That says a lot. But yeah, Caris, I may have given you some issues early on in my eight years as a councillor. But once I had one chat with you, I think that was it then. I've been on best behaviour ever since. So thank you for your wise advice. And, you know, with all that experience, there are going to be difficult shoes to fill. So, you know, good luck in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Councillor Lisa Mitten, please.
Well, I've got no water left, and I may get emotional. So I do apologise if I do break and get emotional. But I really want, I didn't know this either, so I wanted to say this to you. I probably could say this in standards of rights, I don't know. Anyway, what I wanted to say was, you know, oh, here I go, in twenty seventeen, you helped me through a very personal issue. Apologies, not professional. Nobody knows, apart from us and the ombudsman, where I was unfairly referred to the ombudsman. The point I'm getting to is, you steered through me through ten months of hell in my personal life and then my professional life because I didn't know what was going to happen and worried about what would happen to me and the children and things like that. But what you did is, you steered me through as a monitoring officer, but as a friend as well. And I will never forget that. And as a result, because of what happened to me and the length of time it took the ombudsman to come back, what I'm trying to get to, apologies for getting upset, but also for other colleagues as well, is we've worked together in Standards Committee to, with our wonderful chair in Standards Committee as well, I have to say, to go back to the ombudsman and say those times are unacceptable. And I'm pleased to say that we now see, albeit we don't want to see ombudsman referrals, but they happen, that's life. But I'm now pleased to say that we see it turn around a lot quicker because of the detrimental effect it can have, certainly on innocent parties as well. And there we are, I've redeemed myself. Apologies, but thank you, Caris, for the help and support you gave me in that very difficult time. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Councillor Andrew Barry?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. It's difficult to follow that, really. I'll try and hold the tears back. Caris, the last eight years, the wandering down the corridor on a Wednesday afternoon just before it all kicked on, will forever stay with me. It's that steely look in your eye when you tell me something, which is like, you can take that to the bank, fair enough, which is a thing I remember. Thanks for all the work over, certainly the whole of your career, but the last eight years where you advised Michelle from the group. Thanks for that. And just to wish you all the very best in whatever you choose to do next. I'm sure you'll have a great time.
Councillor Barry, any further comments? Nope. Okay, thank you. We go to item twenty two, the last one on the agenda. Received communications with his worship, the mayor. I have one. And unfortunately, this is my last meeting as well. So I extend an invite to all elected members, officers, back to the mayor's parlour, just for a farewell drink. If anybody would like to come, you're more than welcome. I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.